Welcome to this airing of Canada videos produced by League of Women Voters Bloomington. What a special thank you to the city of Bloomington for the video production. League of Women Voters is a 100 year old nonpartisan political organization that never endorses candidates or political parties. In these videos, you will hear candidates for mayor of the city of Bloomington and candidates for the two at large seats on the Bloomington City Council. The names of all of these candidates will appear on the general election ballots in all precincts within the city. Mayor candidates are seeking elections to a four-year term beginning in January 2024. Candidates for one council at large seat are running for a four-year term. Candidates for the second council at large seat are seeking election to fill the two remaining years of a seat vacated when a council member resigned.
Hello Bloomington, I'm Mayor Tim Bussie. I'm running for reelection this fall and I would absolutely appreciate your vote on November 7th. I couldn't be prouder of the work that we've done and all that we've accomplished in the city of Bloomington over the past four years. The city of Bloomington is on the right track and it's gratifying to see the vast majority of Bloomington residents agree with that statement. In our latest community survey, 90% of residents rate Bloomington as an excellent or good place to live. In my first term as mayor, I've made it clear that Bloomington will invest our resources in ways that reflect the values and the priorities of this community and that we will excel in the nuts and bolts work of municipal government. From public safety to parks and trails to financial management, we have done just that. Bloomington is one of the best-run cities in Minnesota and that's the result of strong leadership, a top-notch staff, engaged residents, and a strong partnership with community and business organizations. That is a great recipe for success. When I say that our work reflects on the values of this community, I mean things like public safety. Public safety has always been and will continue to be a top priority in the city of Bloomington. Our police officers and firefighters are second to none and we fund their success. Bloomington is making the move to a hybrid full-time fire department and last year, we added police officers to the police department for the first time in a decade. I'm proud to say that Bloomington crime statistics are at a five-year low. Bloomington prioritizes careful stewardship of resources. As mayor, no job is more important to me than to be a careful thoughtful steward of Bloomington tax dollars. And frankly, I believe that dollar for dollar, Bloomington city services are an outstanding value for residents. About 84% of city expenditures go to the foundational nuts and bolts work that comes in city government: police, fire, public works, park and recreation, and community development. Speaking of parks, Bloomington residents love their parks and our new park system master plan, developed with extensive community involvement, will guide park improvements and set priorities in our park system for years to come. And when we talk about community values, we need to talk about our business community. We restructured the Port Authority, adding resources that allows the port to expand their economic development work citywide. Our new small business development center will open next year and the Bloomington Workforce Steering Committee is a public-private partnership with the goal of creating 12,000 new jobs in Bloomington by 2027. The challenges of climate change are undeniable and they are urgent. Through the work of our Sustainability Commission and the city council, we're addressing climate change on a very local level. And finally, the city of Bloomington has never done more in terms of community engagement, transparency at City Hall, and connecting with residents. From televising all of our city council meetings to an unbelievable amount of information available online, to the council minute, to our community outreach and engagement division, the city of Bloomington involves and consults with residents like never before. In Bloomington, we invest in the values and the priorities of this community. We're on the right track and we're going to continue our work. And to that end, effective proven leadership matters. Just two years ago, the city of Bloomington and the entire world faced an unimaginable crisis. There's no instruction manual as to how to deal with a worldwide pandemic, but through steady leadership, sound decision-making, and the willingness to make some tough decisions, Bloomington persevered. Similarly, the murder of George Floyd shook a number of cities to their core. Here in Bloomington, we faced a moment with empathy and a determination to learn and to grow, and now we're considered leaders in the Twin Cities. Effective proven leadership that you can trust matters. Here in Bloomington, we're working to create an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. That's the mission statement of our new Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan. It's exciting to work on a plan where the end goal is to have people come and live and work and play and dine and shop in our community. The to-do list we have is exciting as well. We're going to successfully launch the new small business development center. We're going to see our park system master plan come to life. We're continuing the work to create a full-time Bloomington fire department and expand creative placemaking across the entire city. We're going to help our microchip industry expand exponentially and we're going to make Bloomington a city where everyone is welcome. The state of our city is strong. The future of Bloomington is bright and I hope you agree and I hope I win your vote on November 7th. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring these videos and for their tireless work protecting democracy here in Bloomington and everywhere.
Hello Bloomington, my name is David Clark and I'm running for mayor this year in this year's city municipal elections. What if you could vote for a mayor who has extensive business experience? Who's run a small business for the last 15 years? Who's had to make hiring and firing decisions? Who's had to do marketing, sales? Who's had to pay taxes? Who's had to tighten the belt when things got tight? What if you could vote for a mayor with that kind of experience? What if you could vote for a mayor who's an airline pilot, an airline captain, who's been trained at the highest levels to forecast events in the future? Looking down the road, 2, 3, 400 miles, looking at weather, looking at unanticipated events, exercising discipline, leadership, communication, always planning for an emergency, never letting myself get backed into a corner? What if you could vote for a candidate that had that kind of experience that transfers directly to a mayor's job? What if you could vote for a candidate who grew up overseas in a developing nation, in a different culture, having to learn to appreciate differences, seeing differences not as weaknesses but as strengths? Well, the good news is you can vote for a candidate like that. That candidate is me. My name is David Clark. I've been a Bloomington resident for 20 years. I've been involved in civic life here. I've raised my family and I've decided that it's time for me to run for mayor. Now, the current mayor, Tim Bussie, my opponent, is a good man. I respect him a lot. But the thing that I'm hearing from people, as I talk to hundreds of people and the campaign is just beginning, the thing that I hear the most is that they want change. They're concerned about the trajectory of Bloomington for the future. They're concerned that we're becoming more like Minneapolis and they're concerned about Bloomington's place in the future as a strong viable city that they can live long-term. They want change. They want new leadership. They want a new set of eyeballs looking at the city's problems. They want a new person at the helm of the city to bring true unity to lead us into the future. And that person is me. So I ask you for your vote. You can go to my website, davidclarkformayor.io, davidclarkformayor.io, to see my positions, to see my background, and to find different ways to interact with me, whether it's on Facebook, Instagram, email, or even picking up the phone and calling me. I welcome the chance to visit with you and I thank you for your vote. My name is David Clark and I'm running for mayor this year, 2023, in Bloomington's municipal elections. Thank you so much.
Hello Bloomington neighbors. My name is Jenna Carter and I am running for reelection to my current position as one of Bloomington's two at-large city council members. I live in Bloomington with my husband Mike and our two children Dylan and Evelyn and our puppies Luna and Sunny. And as a little bit of background, my parents were both active-duty military most of my childhood, so when they retired, we moved to a small town in Iowa where I ended up going to high school and actually met my future husband Mike. I then went on to Iowa State University where I graduated and then came up to the University of Minnesota where I received my master's degree. It was shortly after this that Mike and I decided that we loved Minnesota so much that we wanted to make it our home. So for about 15 years, I have worked across sectors, really advancing solutions to advance community health and equity with a strong focus on policy and systems change. I am currently the Associate Executive Director of Mission and Strategy at the Epilepsy Foundation of Minnesota, where I lead the organization's strategies to support people impacted by epilepsy across the state. In 2023, I was honored to be named a Minneapolis-St. Paul Business Journal 40 Under 40 Honoree and in 2018, I was honored to receive a Humphrey Policy Fellowship. So when I ran for city council in 2019, I committed to the residents of Bloomington that I would help make our community more healthy, vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive. My core priorities were really focused around accessible and updated parks and recreation system, making sure that we have affordable housing options for people across the income spectrum, making sure that we have a safe and healthy environment, and making sure that we're supporting small businesses and neighborhood node revitalization. I also committed to making sure that I am listening and that as a council and as a city, we are more authentically engaging residents in developing the solutions that we know we need in Bloomington. So when I started on council, January 2020, never could I have imagined within a few short months, a global pandemic would hit, followed shortly by the murder of George Floyd and the resulting civil unrest. So to say that the first couple of years of my term were challenging would be an understatement, but it truly has been an honor to serve our community through such difficult times. And despite those challenges, I am very, very happy and proud of the work that the city council has been able to accomplish. So I just want to share a little bit about those accomplishments. So for the first time ever, the city council launched community-based strategic planning, where we engaged hundreds of residents throughout the city in setting the strategic direction for our community for the next five years. We adopted a new park system master plan and now we are doing neighborhood and park-specific planning and engagement. And for the first time ever, we have dedicated staff and resources to natural resource preservation and management in Bloomington. We also have prioritized and invested in public safety. We have made much, much-needed investments in police and fire and so those departments now have the support that they need to do their jobs well. And according to our police chief, as of this summer, Bloomington's crime rate is at a four-year low. We are also launching a small business development center and we are really more deeply engaging with our small business community so we can determine better ways to support them but also reduce barriers to doing business in Bloomington. We are also 90% of the way toward our Met Council affordable housing goals and we are enhancing our programs to help keep people in their homes longer, particularly seniors, as well as piloting programs to increase pathways to homeownership. And last but not least, we have prioritized equity and inclusion. So shortly after the murder of George Floyd, our city council declared racism a public health crisis and we asked a group of community leaders to come together and develop recommendations for our city council for how to address inequities in our community. And I'm happy to say that most of those recommendations are in planning or in implementation. So we have done all this and more despite the pandemic and while maintaining the city's triple AAA bond rating, speaking to the financial strength of our community. We are only one of 38 cities across the country that can proudly say that. So when people ask me why I'm running for city council, I tell them very genuinely that I love this community and I'm deeply committed to it and I want to continue to see this good momentum going. The fact is, Bloomington is a growing and changing community with aging infrastructure and much-needed investment in our core city services. Our city council has had to make very difficult decisions over the past four years and we're going to continue to have to make difficult decisions. But I commit to the residents of Bloomington that in that decision-making, I will continue to prioritize Bloomington values, community engagement, and making sure that we are making as fiscally responsible decisions as possible while funding our collective priorities. So with that, thank you. It has been an honor to serve this community for the last four years and I now ask for your vote in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Bruce Colton. There are two at-large city council seats. I am running for one of them against the incumbent. John Minkes is running for the other at-large seat, also against another incumbent, not against me. I have been a Bloomington resident for 48 years since 1975. I have lived in Minnesota since I was three years old. With the exception of a four-year stint in the US Navy, serving as my father and my son did, I was stationed in Iceland for two and a half years where I learned to speak fluent Icelandic, a skill that I doubt will have any advantage in the office that I seek. There, I met my wife Ragna, who saw me through 11 years of getting my EE degrees at the University of Minnesota and two whom I have been married for 58 years. Boy, these are some pretty high numbers. Well, I'm probably the oldest candidate in this race, so I bring balance and diversity to the council. Don't discount that, please. But I am not done yet. I designed and built my own website for this race myself. Never did that before. Why do I bring that up? I'm always learning and adaptable. I have a penchant for it, but it also gives me a judicious eye for the truth and untruth, part of the engineering mind, I guess. This judgment comes from having a breadth of actual hands-on knowledge, business, technology, people, and budget management. That knowledge and seasoned wisdom will serve Bloomington when you elect me for your council representative. But why? Why do I want to run? It should better be stated, why am I running? Through the average right-thinking person, you should feel reluctant to run for office, but compelled to run. The reason I'm running, to try to make things better, to try to affect a course change, a course correction where I see needed, one is needed. It's not a job that anybody should really want. You're not supposed to be roosting in office either. No matter how good you think you are, there's too much temptation to separate yourself from the people, to start following the beat of your own drum. I don't want to disparage anybody who has served or is serving on the city council at present. It is a thankless job. And by the way, the pay is horrible too. I just disagree with them. I think that vanity has already set in. I disagree with their spending habits and direction. The voice of the average tax-paying citizen has become harder for them and my opponent to hear. I am compelled to run, to try to help right the ship. There are many ways of dying that I can handle, but being taxed to death is not one of them. I am running to try to apply a course correction for Bloomington, a change which I believe the Bloomington citizens want. Thank you very much, coltonforconsul@coltonforconsul.com.
Hello, my name's Maxwell Collins. I'm running for the special election at-large city council member here in Bloomington, Minnesota. Some of my background history on me personally is I'm a proud Bloomington resident. I've been here for 20-plus years, came here in 2001 with my family and my parents and my sisters who still live in Bloomington here. And I'm also a proud graduate from the Bloomington Public School Systems. I went to Kennedy High School. I went to Hamlin University for my Bachelor's of Arts in Political Science. Then I recently just graduated with my Master's in Public Policy at the U of M where I focused on government and economic development, where I focused my thesis on housing development in northwest Minnesota. To continue on, I'll talk more about my priorities here. So my priorities, the first one is I'm looking at affordable housing and renters assistance here in Bloomington and that's a big one for me, mainly due to affordable housing has been so high with property taxes been going up, even though Bloomington has been lower compared to other communities and I want to make sure as a city council member, we can keep it that way and make Bloomington a better place to live. Also with rental assistance, with rents staying at the levels that they're at, even though the city has provided affordable renting, we still need to work more on that front. Another aspect that I have or priority is looking at small business development within the city of Bloomington because we have a lot of small businesses and large businesses, but I find small businesses to be the backbone of our community and we need to make sure that they are able to thrive because when they thrive, our community thrives. And then one other one is community engagement and infrastructure spending. When it comes to community engagement, the city does a terrific job on doing that part, but we need to make sure that every resident is heard and what their concerns and what their policy issues are needs to be addressed with the city because sometimes as a city council, we might not have the same values or beliefs that our residents do and we need to make sure that we stay in touch with that. And then when it comes to public infrastructure spending, the city was built in the 60s and 70s all at the same time. We want to make sure that that does not come down the road all at once and skyrocket our property taxes. Instead, we want to make sure that we do good planning and be able to upgrade our roads and our sewer lines and so forth without having to do much of increasing our property taxes here in Bloomington. So if you want to find out more about my campaign, you can look me up for maxforbloomington.com or you can look up my Facebook, which is just Max for Bloomington. So thank you.
I'm Jonathan Minkes and I'm running for city council at-large in the special election. I didn't dream of this or aspire to get into politics. My sense of service just takes over sometimes in my life. I grew up in Bloomington. I attended Indian Mounds, Oak Grove, and Kennedy. I played BA sports as a youth and now my kids play in the same group as I do, did. Not many people can say that. I like to say I'm about as Bloomington as you can be. After high school, I had plans to go into law enforcement. I wanted to be a police officer. My sense of serving just took off and along with two friends, we showed up at the Army Recruiting Center at the same time. I joined the Army National Guard as an MP to be a military police. It was truly one of the best decisions of my life to serve my state and country. I wouldn't trade it for anything. During my time, I received the Army Achievement Medal and I was honorably discharged after six years. Well, life's plans don't always work out the way you want them, so I ended up going into corporate America and spent years in professional sales. Whatever I did, I was good at. I won plenty of awards for salesmanship and accolades. I lost my job in the recession and I was unemployed for nearly two years. I would say that Bloomington cleanup days actually saved my life. You might think that's strange, but I would fix up furniture, small engines, fish tanks, and kennels, and bikes to keep a roof over my head and keep food on the table. In 2011, with barely any money, when everyone told me I would fail, I opened Johnny Rock Bikes in Hopkins. I work really hard at everything I do in keeping my family and house in order and always a steady paycheck for my employees. Failure is not an option. In 2020, I opened Johnny Rock Bikes in Bloomington and I never knew it would be such a bumpy ride for the next three years. COVID was good and bad. I can relate to so many other small business owners that lost their businesses and that flourished. It was exhausting and we were just pulling ourselves out of that shadow. I get up every day and I work as hard as I can and I will do the same if you elect me to the council seat. Again, I felt the need to serve, so a few years ago, I tried to get into the commission with the city of Bloomington. I didn't make it, but I vowed I would try again. When a new opening came up, I applied again and I was appointed by the Bloomington Minnesota City Council for the Park and Rec Commission. I have enjoyed being on the board and getting to see how the Parks and Department works in the city. Bloomington is fortunate to have a lot of green spaces and parks. We are truly blessed to have these parks and some natural resources like small lakes in the Minnesota River Valley with a lot of great nature parks for hiking and biking and activities. It's one of the things that keeps me here. It was great growing up in Bloomington. If you want to go fishing, you can. If you want to go hiking, you can. I enjoy asking questions at our meetings and asking what else? I was a strong advocate for the obstacle course at Smith Park. I can remember how exciting that was. I am a parent of two young boys and they need to get their wiggles out. We can now ride to this park. It was great growing up in Bloomington. I reference this quite a bit, myself growing up here. Now I hear people are leaving to avoid the Minneapolis and St. Paul syndrome. It's okay to not do anything, everything those cities do. We can be different, but Bloomington is not the same Bloomington it used to be. My platform is common sense, lower taxes, supporting Bloomington police and fire. I'm a business owner. Running the city is like a business. I want to bring back open forums at City Hall and as a city leader, I need to hear you. Supporting and keeping our green spaces. We will never get these back if we let them go. I support a senior center, fiscal responsibility. Whether it comes to our taxes or our spending, we all need to reduce where we can. I can relate to this with the business owner. Our hours have changed and our staffing has changed as well. We really need to look at our spending and see if it makes sense. People are leaving Bloomington. Used to leave Minneapolis and St. Paul to come to Bloomington. Now people are leaving Bloomington to go south. I met a couple in West Bloomington that are moving to Prior Lake. They moved here when there wasn't anything. They're leaving because of the taxes and the direction the city is headed and more. You could tell they would want to stay, but they can't. It used to be the farmer down the road and the general store owner who ran for offices. These were your everyday neighbors that represented you locally. I want to bring that representation back. I am the resident for the residents. When people thank me for my military service, I learned a great response. I did it for you. I am again wanting to serve you. I am doing this for you, the residents of Bloomington, Minnesota. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
Hello folks, I'm council member Saw Mua, pronounced Saw like a chainsaw, and I'm excited to let you know that I'm running for election this year. Thank you for tuning in to watch and considering me as your candidate for the city council at-large special election this year. Over the last eight years, Bloomington has become my home. It has provided for me and my family and I am determined to reciprocate that kindness. I'm not afraid to admit that I don't know everything, but I'm always willing to learn. Over the course of a decade of a career in food service and food manufacturing, I learned the expertise in assessing risks and how they could potentially impact thousands of people. When I realized that I needed a better understanding of how the business operates and how I can be a greater contributor, I went back and achieved my Master's in Business Administration. Combined with my experience and my education, I have been effective in managing multimillion-dollar business units through strategic planning to achieve greater goals. I will continue to apply my skills and education and continuously search for additional information to help continuously improve Bloomington. My passion and learning about Bloomington led me to the Bloomington Leadership Program. I was simply looking for a way to learn more about my city, but through this, I discovered an incredible community which includes all of you. I was inspired to continue serving. Even through the pandemic, I volunteered to serve my city and my neighbors and my friends on the Community Budget Advisory Committee to ensure that the city would protect necessary services so that residents could keep going. I then had the opportunity to help chart our city's future as a member of the core planning team on our strategic plan, Bloomington Tomorrow Together. And through these experiences, I've understood that there is still much more work to do and I have much more to give. And that led to me being appointed to the city council in February of this year because of the vision I have of what Bloomington can become. There are three core areas that I will focus on as your council member. The first is unleashing the potential of our residents. I've spoken with many residents, neighbors, and business owners and we are full to the brim with people who are ready to do great things, whether that's starting a business, forming a children's playgroup, or just hosting national night out. Community connections are the lifeblood of Bloomington and we must continue to facilitate those structures. I am proud to have updated our food truck ordinances in Bloomington and this has allowed Scrambling Egg to become the hottest food truck here in town and given them the support structure necessary to blossom here in Bloomington. Number two, it's not enough just to work in Bloomington. We must provide people the opportunity to set down roots. To start, I voted in favor of updating our low-density residential zones to allow people that opportunity to start their lives here, but that is not enough. We stand at a crossroads where we must provide the support necessary for our seniors to retire comfortably but have an eye in the future to make Bloomington the ultimate choice for families. And I do not believe And I do not believe that this is a zero-sum game or a choice of one or the other. With strategic investments in facilities like a shared community center at Creekside, seniors and families with children can freely connect and share their stories and experiences with each other in a way that preserves our history and strengthens our community. And lastly, what matters most to me is that our neighbors can freely travel from one side of town to the other. I hear stories from my father-in-law, who grew up right here in Bloomington and lived on Eighty Second and Lyndale. Any given summer, he and his friends could bike all the way to Bush Lake Beach without the worry of being run over by cars or zigzagging through neighborhoods just to find a safe route. And so that means we must continue to invest in our infrastructure, provide safe paths for biking and walking, make sure that our public transportation systems support everyone, and keep our streets safe by investing in our police and fire. These are the things that make a city strong. And so today, I'm asking for your support, because we all have unique and different histories, but we all have one thing in common: a shared future in Bloomington. Thank you again, and with your support, we will continue to move forward together. Learn more about me at muahforbloomington.com.
Thank you to the candidates for appearing in these videos. Thank you, audience, for viewing these videos. Voters, remember to vote in the general election on or before November seventh. To learn more about voting and registering to vote, go to the Minnesota Secretary of State's website at mnvote.org. To read candidates' answers to questions, go to the League of Women Voters website at vote411.org.